I want to officially call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Call Agenda Item Number Two. Mr. Pettis?
Yes, thank you all for being here. Item number two is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be given by Rabbi Dr. Claudio J. Kogan and followed by the pledge of allegiance from Scout BSA Troop 272. And with us today is Caleb Stroop, Noah Gill, Ferlin Stroop, Elwin Stroop, and Emma Salcedo. Rabbi, please. Please stand.
Source of all life, we ask your blessings for the city of Mission, the city to be. Guide the city leaders with righteousness, strengthen their hearts, but keep them from hardening. Give the city leaders the capacity to use their influence and authority to speak truth and act for justice. May all who dwell in this city share in its bounty, enjoy its freedoms, and be protected by its laws. May the city use its power and wealth to be a voice for justice, peace, and equality for all who dwell on earth. May we be strong and have courage to be bold in our action and deep in our compassion. May we be strong to discern when we must listen and when we must act. May we have courage to uproot bigotry, intolerance, misogyny, racism, discrimination, and violence in all its forms, to celebrate the many faces of God reflected in the wondrous diversity of humanity. May all of us be strong to welcome the stranger and the immigrant and to honor the gift of those who seek refuge and possibility here as they have since before this nation was born. Let justice well up like waters and righteousness like a mighty stream. And let us all say, amen.
Amen.
May you please follow me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you also come forward over here for us to take a photo with the rabbi? Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being here. Thank you for supervising the ... Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for supervising the ...
Thank you. I got to thank my wife a lot.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Call for regular meeting Agenda Item Number Three. Judge?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Whereas, first of all, municipal courts are weak celebrating that. We have a proclamation. Whereas, municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas. Whereas, more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. Whereas, the state law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the Mission Municipal Court is a state court and its judges are members of the state judiciary. Whereas, the procedures for the Mission Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Court of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas. Whereas, the City of Mission is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas, Mission Municipal Judges are not policymakers for the City of Mission but are bound by the laws and the canons of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the City Council, city officials, and employees. Whereas, the City Council recognizes that the Constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Mission Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now, therefore, being resolved by the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, that the week of November 4th through 8th, 2019, is hereby recognized as Municipal Court Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Mission proclaimed on this the 28th day of October, 2019.
Thank you, Judge. I will entertain the motion.
Can I make a motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. Any questions by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Your proclamation has been approved.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I do have a couple of other things if I could just address regarding ...
Go ahead. The chair recognizes you, Judge.
Thank you. Thank you. In recognition, and today I have Jeannie Gomez and Nora Gonzalez with me from the court.
Have them come up to the front so we are live so the citizens will be able to see you and recognize you and be able to ...
Right.
Because you do serve the public.
Mayor, Council, in recognition of Municipal Court Week, we are pleased to announce that the Mission Municipal Court will be holding endlessly for the entire month of November, which will be from November 1st through noon on November 27th, 2019. We encourage anyone who has any outstanding warrants that they can come in without the fear of being arrested, that they're encouraged to come in, in person, and take advantage of this opportunity to have their paid appear charges and their warrant, all warrant fees waived if they pay the entire balance in full. Having said that, we also encourage those who cannot or financially unable to pay their balances in full to also come in and take advantage of our walk-in dockets and speak to a judge about payment options such as payment plans, community service, or even potentially a claim of indignity. Also, we are trying to make the court, as we all know, more accessible and more convenient to the public. We are going to be closing on Saturdays, and instead, we're going to be amending our court hours, modifying them, so we're going to be having extended hours on Tuesdays and Thursdays, beginning again in November, November 1st. We'll actually start the following Tuesday. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, the court will be open until 7:00 PM, and we will no longer be open on Saturday morning. So, we hope, encourage people to come in and take advantage of those extended hours when they get off, when they get out of work. And a friendly reminder that we are, as we all know, but a friendly reminder that we still accept online and phone payments 24/7 all during the week, so.
Jim?
Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for that, Judge, but please do understand, as if we do get phone calls of constituents that want to come in on Saturday, we're going to have to change that. But hopefully, we'll do enough advertising about being open late on certain days.
Mm-hmm.
Because we originally set the Saturday because we were having people needing to come in on a Saturday.
Right. Yeah, we're kind of going to compare the numbers and see, be flexible how we're doing it.
Okay.
But not as many people were coming in on Saturdays as we had hoped for, so we're hoping the extended hours would be even more accessible to them.
Is a motion required, Mr. Martinez? No motion is required for the change?
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Judge? Have staff to come over also for the picture. I can present you officially the proclamation. Thank you, ladies. Can you see everybody?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge? Congratulations. Thank you very much. Regular meeting Agenda Item Number Four.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My report today is obviously on our budget adjustments for 2019-2020, obviously in our transparency to the citizens we serve, and I just wanted to give you and our citizens a report on some of the items that were approved for the Mission Police Department based on the funds that we're receiving, based on, obviously, our increase in taxes, but obviously, we have to make sure we're accountable for our spending. This first slide, I wanted to show you on our capital outlay improvement account, the different items that were approved. Obviously, a spike system for our patrol units. This is important when we do have police pursuits. The good thing is that we're having less and less every year, which is a lot better as far as safety of our citizens. Our special weapons and tactics team as well, trying to get some of the equipment that they need to do their operations. We've got $9,000 to do that. Our watch guard DVD duplicator system, there's a new law that came into existence several years ago requiring us to submit any and all video information, both from our body worn camera system and our video camera system, and this system will make it easier for us to duplicate these items for the district attorney's office for prosecution of cases. At the same time, the interview room camera system, it's important that we utilize that and take in statements from victims, from witnesses, and also defendant's statements that will be implemented as well. And actually, it's part of the agenda for today for purchase. Police body worn cameras, as you know, we did receive a grant several years ago, and we were able to get a little bit over 160 cameras. Obviously, some are in need of repair, so we got an additional $13,000 to be able to do that. One of the things that we're looking at, at purchasing in the near future, we're still doing some looking as far as the different companies that exist, and some research on police tasers. So, right now, we're doing those studies to make sure we buy the appropriate taser for our officers on patrol. Desktop computers, we have an initial amount of $30,000 for that. We've already started a slow progression to be able to obtain some of these computers. Obviously, the most important ones right now is for our Criminal Investigation Bureau to make sure we're able to do some of the work that we need to do for our citizens in investigating some of the crimes that are given to us on a daily basis. Our records management hardware system, as you know, we did get a $300 and about $42,000 grant from the governor's office for the software part of it, and now this records management hardware system will allow us to be able to mesh both together. So, that's where those $150,000 will be utilized. Just so you know, after our last meeting, I have already signed a contract with Tyler Technologies, so we're in the process of making sure that process starts going for the purchase of that software and, obviously, implementation of our new software system through Enterprise. And also, our laptops and docking stations, that's another important component of the hardware system that you see just right above it. One of the things in going to this new software, important is going to be the change on the laptop systems. The laptops we currently have will not work with that system. Obviously, they're older, and that's why we needed this amount of money here, the $250,000. And all this $498,500 in these items that, obviously, we're getting for the police department, again, to better serve the citizens of our community. Next slide, please. The other thing I wanted to touch on is there's these three critical accounts that are part of our budget every year, but I'm glad, one of the things that we work on with a collaborative group meeting that you set up, Dr. Okanya, is to make sure that we work on some of these line items to make sure that we're able to take care of our officers on, on travel and training. Our budget went up $20,000 from $40,000 to $60,000. On clothing and uniforms, we had an increase of $19,000 to clothing and uniforms, and police supplies, we had an increase of $10,000. On our next council meeting, the first meeting in November, we'll have an Agenda Item for the purchase of the uniforms. We've had two sessions for them to come in and get measured, and so we'll be, that will be on the next agenda, to make sure we get those uniforms. Obviously, travel and training, we're working to send all our staff to the required trainings that the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement requires us to do, and, obviously, buying some more police supplies to replace some of the older web gear type equipment for our officers as well. And the last one I want to touch up on is the police incentive package pay increase that was provided to our sworn officers, our, all our civil service employees, and also for our dispatch, our certification pay for dispatchers. These are the different categories that were affected. Certification pay, we are intermediate, advanced, and master certification, given to us by the state of Texas. Obviously, it's something that's earned over the years of service as a police officer, and we start as a basic when we first start as a police officer, and then we advance to the different levels based on the years of experience and also the training hours as required by the commission. Education pay, the only one we changed on that one is a master's degree. We had never had that category, so we added a master's degree because we do have one officer that currently has a master's degree, so we included that. On the assignment pays, for the first time, we have assignment pay for our color guard. They are requested throughout different events in our community, and it was important for us to put that up there for them. Our CID and our SWAT assignment pays also increased from $1,800 to $2,000 and $1,600 to $2,000 respectively. This is kind of in line with the other departments in our area and what they are getting paid for those assignments. And then we included a second assignment pay. This is basically, our officers that do qualify for a second assignment pay are allowed to be able to apply for this. There are strict restrictions on who can and can't apply. Obviously, making sure that we are, making sure that we do give this to those persons that do qualify for the position. The total increase on that, again, is $75,627. And also for our dispatchers, dispatchers, about five years ago, the state of Texas, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, made it mandatory that they also go through a certification program, and they're basically, like a police officer, they have to take their drug, their physical, their stress, and a psychological now as well to become a police dispatcher. So, that's why we started dispatcher certification pay packet. The total of this, total packet is $255,000, and, obviously, again, trying to be transparent and making sure that our citizens know exactly where the money is being utilized in the different categories aligned here today. Do you all have any questions?
The dispatchers have now recognized as first responders, am I correct?
Yes, they are, sir. Yes, there was a new law that came into existence as well to make sure that they fall in with that category, and they also qualify for a lot more benefits, just like police officers do.
Mayor, may I ask a question? Go ahead.
Okay. On this slide, Chief Dominguez, I know that I asked you this before in the past about our CID and other, other police staff that you've added, like more personnel in other categories. My question would be, could a given officer be on color guard, CID, and SWAT at the same time, or they only have a limit of two?
They have a limit of two. They had a limit of one only. They can only get one. And one thing, through the collaborative meetings that we had, the two unions requested a second assignment pay, and that's what was brought up as a collaborative group and, obviously, brought to you as a council, which you approved based on your approval of the police incentive package instead of the 3% raise. So, for those that qualify, and we have strict definitions of how they can qualify for that second assignment pay, they are allowed to have two assignment pays.
Okay, I just want to, again, my same comment, would I, I'll reiterate what I had told you before in the last meeting, is that I really would like to see if there's other officers that in the past would have liked to come in to do some type of assignment like this, but there's already been people that have been there for many years. I would like for it to be some type of rotation basis so that we could allow other people to also take part in getting these type of statements. Like, let's say you've had, you know, in CID, and I don't know how often you move people around or shift them.
Mm-hmm.
Because I feel that sometimes we get complacent with the things that we do.
Right.
And sometimes, you know, there's other people that have been on patrol for many, many years and would like something different. And so, if we have personnel, I'm not saying that they're not doing a great job, I'm sure we have fantastic investigators, but I'm sure there's those other people that have been waiting for quite some time to get into those positions. Are you kind of keeping a list of moving?
Well, and that's the thing, that, one of the things in these specialized positions, you want the experienced officer to make sure that, especially in that particular realm of what we do as a law enforcement agency, in submitting cases for prosecution to the district attorney's office and sometimes to the US Attorney's Office, is to have those people with that experience that, obviously, can do that. Now, do we have rotation back to patrol from criminal investigations? Not that there is rotation in itself, but we've had officers transferred back to patrol, and we get new officers to transfer back into criminal investigations. Like, right now, we have two openings, and, obviously, we're going to be announcing those openings for criminal investigations. So, I can tell you that on a yearly basis, there's usually two or three vacancies that we rotate every year, so there's always new people coming in.
Okay, great. I think that maybe you may try to consider, I know that Randy had an awesome job as far as for administrative purposes here at City Hall, to kind of do a mentorship program for city, you know, for the city manager, position or assistant and deputy. So, we got other administrators to kind of fill that role, and so maybe what you can do is offer the same mentorship to some that are interested in it so that they can already start getting that experience.
Right. Okay, sure.
And then, I wanted to go back to the line item where it said about technology.
Yes.
I think it's very important that we go and we really do ask exactly what type of laptop or computer system would be good for that individual, because where I work at, I've gone an iPad and a Surface. And, boy, the Surface is, like, for me, for what I do at the office and all of that, it really works really well because you can type everything up and then push a button it, and you can write it with a pen, and then it comes out typed, and then they can take that to the houses. Maybe some victims of crime cannot come into the office when they do the home visits. The clients can actually sign it and then take it back. So, there's a lot of different technology out there, which I'm sure you've already found out. I just want to make sure that we're getting the best for our money.
Right. Well, one of the things we're doing is, in the spirit of making sure that we use what we have, one of the things that we're doing is, obviously, the new laptop systems are going in the cars, but one of the things that I'm doing with the old laptops is, we're increasing the memory on each one of them to the highest that we can so I can assign that to criminal investigators to be able to go out in the field with them. Currently, we do have, like, three or four that go out with an investigator along with a printer if he needs to go out and take a statement, but I would like each investigator to have one, and, obviously, the other staff at the department that might need one. So, even the old ones, we're going to, obviously, make sure that we build up the memory on them and utilize them throughout the department as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much for the presentation. I do want to let the audience know that we are going to be highlighting a, each city council from now till we rotate all departments. We're going to highlight one department to let us know where the money's going to, especially this week, that I know that us citizens have been receiving the tax, the tax statements, you know, and we're looking at the tax statements and we go, and we start reacting to the tax statements, so at least now you know where the money is going to. But I, in the tax statement, one of the things I do want to point out is go specifically to the city of Mission. To the city of Mission, that's where this money is coming from. This is where this money's coming from, as far as that is concerned, so. Because there's a lot of tax entities in the statement, and we get blamed for it tremendously. So, just, I want you, for the public as well as the audience here, to make sure that you go to the section where it says "City of Mission Tax," and you see, you see what the City of Mission is taxing you for your property that's appraised by the county. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Regular meeting Agenda Item Number Five. Brenda Rodriguez Enriquez.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, in the chamber, well, tomorrow morning at 10:30, we will be hosting a ribbon cutting ceremony, and it will be for sports clips in Palmhurst, so please join us if you can. At 4:30 tomorrow, we will be hosting our monthly membership meeting for new and current members. Next Tuesday, the chamber will participate, will be participating in the connection fair with the welcome, put on by the Welcome Home Organization, where we anticipate about 300 people to be in attendance, and this varies from the RV Park Directors and Activities Directors. The purpose of this event is for the community and the chamber to be well informed to better serve our winter Texan population when they're here and looking for something to do. Regarding our signature events, we will be hosting the 25th Annual Health Fair, which is dated for the first Saturday of year 2020, which is January 4th, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and our title sponsor will be Mission Regional Medical Center. We were able to graciously secure the sponsorship, so we're really excited. It will be at the Mission Event Center. We are now working with the community to inform everyone, all modes of communication. We will be speaking with the city specifically as well so we can have a higher, a higher attendance this, this year coming around. As far as business development, on November 12th, we do have a human resources process workshop available. We still have lots of spots available, so we invite anybody who is interested in the human resources. We will also be finalizing our workshops for the year, for the fiscal year for the chamber. We're anticipating about eight sessions that will focus on workshop development and business development as well. The chamber is also working on a membership guide where everything will be able to be found in one spot. It'll be a centralized benefit, and it will be a great tool for current members and recruiting new members for our chamber, and one of the goals this year is to increase membership as well as adding value to our members. And in the tourism world, next Wednesday, we will be hosting our monthly tourism meeting at 9:30 AM, and that's all I have for today.
Any questions by the council?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Your event, the gala, was just beautiful, and kudos to you and all your staff. The circus theme was phenomenal, and I thank you for having such an event at our beautiful city.
Thank you, Jessica. We do it for the community, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Okay, regular meeting Agenda Item Number Six, departmental reports, and this is a time where any of the council member can review any of the reports that were submitted and ask questions for any of the department heads that we have here present.
Yeah, I'm going to approve the reports as presented.
We have motion to approve the departmental reports as presented.
Second.
We have a second. Any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Regular meeting agenda item number seven, citizens' participation. Ms. Carrillo, do we have anybody?
Mayor, we have Mr. Emmanuel Marquez who signed up.
Uh, that was me, but I had a question about something that.
If, if it's, if he has to do an agenda item, go ahead and, and let us know, come up, up forward, tell us what the agenda item is and, and you, you are allowed to, before we would let it, the citizens know that they, they could not address us with any of the agenda items, but now the, the laws have changed. As effective September the first, you are allowed to address any, unless it's a public hearing item and you, you have the opportunity there, but go ahead and identify the agenda item so the council will know.
I'm not, I'm not sure on the agenda item, but this was about a property changing to commercial. So I'm not sure what that would apply to, a rezoning.
Okay. Is it a public hearing?
I guess, public.
Okay, I will call the public hearing and, and at that time you can, you can address us, sir. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor, we've gotten a request from Mr. Fran Cincerelli, he would like for to have a telephone call with the, for citizens' participation.
Mr. Simpson?
Fran.
Fran Cincerelli. Hi, Fran, this is Anna with the city of Mission.
Uh, you, uh, we're already during the citizens' participation, so you'll have three minutes
to speak and you can begin now.
Okay. My name is Francis Cincerelli, I'm a citizen, resident, taxpayer, and also a homeowner in Cherryland Plantation, which is, our decorant is Paul Cotton and the property manager is Gail Smith, who have had me arrested or attempted to have me arrested and banned from taking care of business in my association. And I'd like to point out to all those listening, and I've informed the media that they've done so, and there is no opportunity here to participate in a homeowner meeting. They break all the laws of Texas regarding our records, rights to access them. Secondly, I want to bring attention to the city of Mission's Police Department that has been lax in performing their duties when requested to come out and investigate dogs not on leash, running free at hand. When I was almost killed in November 1st, 2012, and Chief Dominguez has not been able to find the time to speak with me. Also, I had a meeting with the city attorney, Gus Martinez, and the assistant chief of police, and I was told basically that the problems that we have out here in this community of Cherryland Plantation are our problems and found no help. I would also add that the Crime Stoppers is functioning in a very bad situation similar to the Panama Unit, because I had a, a person that's in my community call, tried to attempt for three days to get an answer and we never got an answer. And I spoke with the officer over Crime Stoppers and he told me the calls are always answered unless he doesn't know the number and called back, gave me a whole bunch of stories and stuff. But the bottom line question was, do you log every call that comes in and assign a number for the anonymity code? And he told me yes, and that's not true, because I told a person in my community, don't hang up without getting a code. So I think there's a lot of problems and corruption in all this stuff. And I, as one citizen, I'm tired of it. This has been a trait that's going on. We have people out at the Butterfly Center, National Butterfly Center, who are too busy protesting to ever stop and talk to a resident that has a suggestion about the wall. And I think it's, the whole thing smacks of, of crime. Thank you.
Is that enough? Did she's finished?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Do we have anybody else?
No, sure, nobody else has signed up.
Okay. Thank you. I will call for 101, as a public hearing, Mr. Osavero.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1 is a second public hearing for a proposed annexation of 440.19 acres described in the agenda packet. And on annexations, the city council is required to hold two public hearings to acquire public input. We enclosed a vicinity map depicting the above described properties. It's a total of seven tracts and these seven tracts are part of a voluntary annexation request that we received here at the city. If the annexation is approved, it will take effect on January the 1st, 2020. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
This is a public hearing, second public hearing for the proposed annexation. Anybody in favor or against this annexation? This is a public hearing for a proposed annexation. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is our second public hearing. This is our second public hearing in proposal of an annex, an annex, annexation. Anybody in favor or against this annexation? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm going to close this public hearing and I'm going to ask the council for any questions for Mr. Osavero and we'll entertain a motion.
This is just a public hearing, Mayor, there's no action on this particular item. The next item is the actual action item.
I stand corrected then. There is, the public hearing is closed and, and we'll go to 1.1B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing to adopt the annexation of the 440.19 acres described on, on the agenda. And if the council is inclined to approve this annexation, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. This is the last step of the annexation cycle. Two public hearings were held to acquire public input. We enclosed a copy of the vicinity map that's being described in the annexation in your agenda packets. The properties are adjacent to Mission city limits and do have or will have water and sewer services. And this, this annexation, if approved, will take place January the 1st, 2020. Staff and the city manager recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
This is a public hearing?
Yes. It's a public hearing to adopt or annex this.
So I open it up again. This is a public hearing for ordinance 4851, for proposed annexation. Anybody in favor or against this annexation? This is a public hearing in proposal of an annexation of, of ordinance 4851. This, this is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against ordinance 4851, which is a proposed annexation? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm going to close this public hearing and I'll ask the city council for any questions or I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the property annexation. And this is opening for a discussion. Anybody has any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, Mr. Osavero. Ordinance 4851 is approved. Opening, public hearing, 1.1C, rezoning. Mr. Osavero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a rezoning of .33 acres out of a 9.53 acre tract of land of the west, 13.335 acres of the south, 19.55 acres of lot 29-8, West Edition and Cherryland subdivision. The property is currently zoned R1 and the intent is to rezonate to R1T for townhomes. The applicant is Juan Reyes and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 9th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located near the northwest corner of Two Mile in Mayberry. Surrounding zones include R1 to the north and to the west. We have AOI to the east. And to the south, we have Public, which is the Veterans High School. The future land use map does reflect this area as a low-density area. At the day of the city, of the Planning and Zoning Commission, there were concerns about putting four townhomes facing East Two Mile Road. The applicant did not show up and the board members had questions as to how they were going to pull out onto Two Mile Road. I did meet with the applicant last week who requested to seek no action on this item so that he can come back with a proposal. However, he was supposed to bring me something today and I didn't hear from him. So our recommendation is going to be for denial of this item based on the concerns and based on the action of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our city manager is also recommending with staff. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm going to close this public hearing and I will open it for any of the council members to, if you have any discussions or if you want to recommend a motion.
I'm going to deny the request for R1T.
We have a motion to deny for R1T rezoning. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Opening for discussion. Any of the council members wants to have any discussion?
I do, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, Hyman, for something particular like this, he was told in advance to come in and meet with you to bring everything.
It's not.
Like, why, why wouldn't, how much did, did he pay for this permit?
He paid 250 for the rezoning. Now, it's not a requirement that you bring a site plan when you, when you rezone a property. However, it is helpful if you show up to defend your project. He failed to show up to the P&amp;Z meeting, there was questions that were asked and because he was.
And he was aware of the times and all that, even for today?
Aware of the time, he was, the owners and the representatives get a notice just like everybody else within 200 feet.
Okay. So upon, the motion is to deny, if it, if it goes for denial, can he apply again?
He would have to wait.
And how much does he pay?
He would have to pay again, but he would also have to wait a six-month period before we can reconsider a rezoning.
And he knew all of that?
He knew all that.
How did he know?
Sorry?
How did he know? Did you?
I met with him.
You met with him?
I met with him individually, yes.
Okay.
I explained all these things to him and I told him, look, it's not a requirement that you have a site plan, but because there's questions, it would help your case to provide us with the site plan.
Okay, thank you, Hyman. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion carries to deny. 1.1D, public hearing for rezoning.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a rezoning of .5 acres of a one-acre tract out of lot 25-9, West Edition and Cherryland. Property is currently zoned AOI and the intent is to rezonate to C2 Neighborhood Commercial. Robert Goodwin is the applicant and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January, on October 9th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning. The subject site is a quarter mile west of Bryan Road along the north side of Griffin Parkway. Surrounding zones include agriculture to the northwest and south. To the east, we do have a C1 office, office building use. The recently revised future land use map does this, does show this area as a general commercial area. We recently approved a chiropractor office just abutting the property last summer and this would be a continuation of the commercial that's already been approved in the area. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and city manager recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning?
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir. Come on, and please state your name and address for the, for the record, sir.
Mayor, Councilman.
And then your position.
How's it going? My name is Emmanuel Marquez. I am owner of the property behind 919 East Griffin Parkway. I just had a question of, I guess, privacy concern, it turning into commercial. I was curious as to what C2 commercial zoning was going to be and how they would separate my residence, because my residence from that commercial property. I know they mentioned privacy fence, but there is an irrigation line that runs north and south of that, of the both of those properties there. So I just wanted to see how they were going to separate and I guess maybe leave an opening for the irrigation company to, or the irrigation to, people go in and service and maintenance and if I was going to have control over anybody going into my property to maintain that. So I'm not sure how that's going to be or.
Well, for, for any construction to take place, they need to subdivide the property so they would have to hire an engineer. And the engineer is going to decide whether or not to relocate the existing irrigation line. If there is an irrigation line in the property, it would either have to be relocated or if it's left in place, there would be an easement where they can't build over it. They are required to have a solid fence. Anytime there's a, a, a commercial business next to a residential property, they are required to provide a solid buffer. It can be a cedar fence or it can be a block wall, depending on the applicant. But right now it's just a rezoning, a neighborhood commercial, could be a daycare, it could be office use, it could be a little small store, nail salon, haircut place. There's a variety of uses that can be put there, however, you can't put a restaurant, well, you can, but you would have to go through a conditional use permit to do a restaurant. So it's.
Or rezonate again.
Right. Okay, yeah, because that was one of my concerns, was that if there was going to be a restaurant, that I'd be getting all the smell of the grease and, because I'm about maybe 60 feet from the, from the line of the back of that property. I do have a 14-foot entrance on that front part on 495. Would that be fenced in as well to separate our driveway from having maybe their customers going in?
Yes.
Yes.
That was it, thank you.
Again, this is a rezoning, the public hearing for rezoning only. The, the details of what's going to go in there and so forth, the, if we, the rezoning goes through, they'll be up, up to C2.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That was going to be my question for him, is how, how he accessed his property? And it's through that 14-foot driveway?
Yes.
Is that your only access?
My entrance, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Did you just build a home back there?
Um, yes, it's currently under construction.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Very nice home.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? I do not see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm going to close this public hearing and open it for any other discussions the council may have or, or entertain a motion.
I moved for approval as presented by staff.
We have a motion to approve the rezoning. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. This is opening for discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance 4852 is approved, Mr. Osavero. Opening, 1.1E, conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and on-site consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is at La Curva Taqueria at 2575 East Griffin Parkway, being Suites 12 of Lot 1, Tres Pico subdivision, Phase 1. Property is zoned C3 and Jose Wurde is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 9th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located approximately 700 feet west of Taylor Road along the north side of E, East Griffin Parkway. The Taqueria has been in existence at this location since January of 2016 and previously a conditional use permit was granted for life of use for a drive-through service window. They do have a drive-through service window on the east side of the building, as can be seen there on the picture above. The owner has increased the size of the restaurant by adding an additional 1,400 square feet and would like to include the sale of beer to his menu. The hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM. A total of 12 employees man the operation. The section 1.56-3 of the zoning code cites that alcohol sales must be 300 feet from the nearest resident, church, school, or publicly-owned property. There are some residences to the north. There's some townhomes directly north of, of this. There's some townhomes directly north of, of this subject site. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to a waiver of 300-foot separation requirement from the residential neighborhood, and that, and that the conditional use permit be approved for a period of two years, at which time, the applicant will have to renew his TABC license and conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1E is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against a conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to close this public hearing, and I'm going to open it for any of the council members.
I move to approve, Mayor.
We have, we have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit. Open it for discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance 4853 is approved, Mr. Azavell. And I'm calling for 1.5F.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1F is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Griffin Grill, selling in 1906 East Griffin Parkway, being Lot 19 of River Oaks Plaza subdivision. Property is zoned C3, and Ram Culinary Group LLC, in care of Richard Kraus is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 9th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located 1,000 feet west of Glasscock Road, along the south side of Griffin Parkway. The applicant is requesting renewal of his conditional use permit for the sale of wine and beer. This CUP was initially approved on August 14th of 2017. It does have a bar component at the restaurant. The hours of operation are Monday through Wednesday, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Thursday and Friday, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Total of six employees man the operation, and Section 1.56-3 of the zoning code states that bars must be 300 feet from the nearest residence, church, school, or publicly-owned property. There is a subdivision, residential subdivision, 150 feet from the proposed site. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the waiver of 300-foot separation requirement from the residential neighborhood, and that the conditional use permit be approved for a period of two years, at which time, the applicant will have to renew his TABC license and conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1F is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to close this public hearing, and I'm going to open it for the council to, if you have any questions, or entertain the motion.
I move to approve. Would that be ordinance 4854 and 4855?
Yes, sir. Correct.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Ordinance 4854 and 4855, and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance 4854 and 4855 are approved, Mr. Azavell. And I call for 1.1G.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1G is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to place four portable buildings for office use on property zoned AOI, to be used in conjunction with the construction materials storage yard on a 15.07-acre tract situated on Portion Number 55 and being part of, and part of Lot 13-6, West Edition Sherry Land subdivision. The applicant is Victor Garza, and if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 23rd, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject is located approximately one mile south of US Express 83, along the west side of Conway. The applicant is requesting a CUP for the installation of four portable buildings that will be used for office use in property zoned agriculture AOI. Section 1.361-3M cites that a CUP may be issued on other uses as determined by the Planning and Zoning Commission are not contrary to the purposes established for this district. Back in March 24th of 2019, a similar request was approved on the abutting acre tract of, 11-acre tract of land just north of this 15-acre site. There is a variance request. The applicant is requesting that he be exempt from water and sewer services. Currently, there are no services within the area, and he's proposing two water tankers and a water well for, for water, and he's proposing septic tanks for the portable buildings. If approved, the four portable buildings will be used for a maximum of two years. An outside contractor will be using the site for a storage yard of building materials as well, and the owner will clear the area, install a caliche, and fence in the entire perimeter of the property. Finally, there is also a cement mixing plant that is being proposed via this CUP request. We did mail notices to property owners within 200 feet, and we did not receive any calls or complaints on the proposal. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the installation of a rock pit leading into the facility for Conway. Approval of the variance request for septic and a water well. However, we are requesting that if, in the future, the city does extend the water and sewer services, which we are in the process of doing, that they tie into those services at that time. We're also asking that we reevaluate this in one year. However, the P&amp;Z did require them to, or did grant them a 24-month approval. However, with regards to the cement mixing plant, staff recommends against such use on unrecorded property that's zoned AOI. Recently, a local cement company rezoned the property to light industrial. They were also on a recorded plat, already on city water and sewer. While we have approved portable buildings through a CUP, the cement mixing plant has never been considered or approved in a conditional use permit. My recommendation is that we require them to subdivide and rezone the property accordingly. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1G is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit?
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Council.
My name is Victor Garza, 4600 Toronto McCallum, longtime resident of the city of Mission. Grew up in Mission. Recently purchased two properties, North Conway, 10 acres there, and 26 acres on South Conway, the subject property. This property is, first and foremost, it's for the levy improvement project, very similar to the project that was approved by City Council April 8th. I do require a 24-month, as Planning and Zoning approved. For the portable buildings and the cement mixing plant, I do come from a background of 30 years with the largest concrete company in the world, with Semex. I managed their operations in South Texas over nine years, so I know ready-mix plants, and I know the permitting process. I understand the concerns brought by Mr. Azavell. However, reviewing the AOI current zoning, the interim agriculture use district is designed to promote orderly and timely economical growth and recognize the current land use conditions. It is reserved for areas in which the future growth of the city might occur. This zoning is suitable for areas where development is premature because of the lack of utilities, or where the ultimate land use has not been determined. So, I don't yet know, after these two years, this temporary project, portable buildings, portable structure, portable ready-mix plant, I don't know what, what I'm going to do with that property down the road. I do know that I'm 41 years old, for as long as I've lived in the city of Mission and been here, there's never, ever been any development in that area. I'm the first one developing this area. Think I've done a good job with the first 11 acres. I intend to do the same with your approval on the 15 acres. Knowing my background in ready-mix, ready-mix plants are permitted and governed by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. It's a state agency that permits the, all the, all the aspects of ready-mix facilities. I'm very familiar with those, because I've had to do numerous of those. And we would abide by the same permits that the other folks down the street are. However, there's a big difference, and the reason why, not only is this a 15-acre tract that this is exempt from the subdivision rules, but we're not going to be selling to the public. This is for the own consumption of the project, much like a tech-stop project might be. We're not going to sell to the public. There's nobody from the public coming in. This is just the employers and contractors working on this project that ultimately benefits our city of Mission to prevent flooding. It helps our residents. It's all actually going to bring growth, and maybe some attention to South Conway that's never had any development. As, as we've discussed previously, on the easements, I've worked with Melden &amp; Hunt. I'm going to provide those easements. Unfortunately, they gave me some documents that had errors in the name of my business, so they're cleaning those up. But I will grant those easements, hopefully, this week, as soon as the council can provide those to me. And we will certainly abide by the same conditions that council gave us April 8th, which was to abandon the septic systems and connect to the city services once they are available. So, I believe, I'm making a substantial investment in this property, bringing up over 1,000 truckloads of dirt, because it is fairly low, 800 truckloads of caliche, AEP, I'm bringing utilities. It's, it's a very dark area. If any of you drive that area at night-
Thank you. You have three minutes. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit?
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good morning.
Council members. My name is Carlos Garza with AEC Engineering, and I'm in favor of this conditional use permit. For the record, the applicant is my brother, but I do happen to be a licensed engineer in the state of Texas, civil and environmental engineer. I can assure you, not only because the gentleman's my brother, I will help him in making sure that the property meets all the state regulatory requirements in regards to TCEQ. And in regards to the utilities, Mayor, I've been working with Mario Reyna, which is currently working for the city with the grant project, in regards to the alignment of that utility easement, and also bringing that infrastructure to the area, which hopefully, that movement that my brother has brought to the area of South Conway will trigger some interest of other people to do so. You just approved a rezoning of some 440 acres down that, that area that I believe Mr. Novades, Dr. Novades owns. And so, in, in regards to the use, he's using, I say "we" because I speak for all of my clients, if, as if, you know, I take a vested interest in the property, is, it's a two-year, because that is how long the project is going to be. They're not selling to the public. There's no public coming to the property. It is an isolated area. The other property that was already zoned, it was a budding single-family residential in a major corridor, which is Conway and the expressway. This is on South Conway. There is no reasons why the code will not allow this, because the code is written specifically for properties like this, that meet the conditions. Absolutely perfect for a conditional use permit or an AOI, because it's an interim zoning. I would like to see y'all give my brother a favorable approval, so that the project can continue. Again, this is a flood control project headed by the US Corps of Engineers. Y'all talk about incentives for, for people to do business. There's not, he's not asking for money from the city. He's going to invest in the city. And the project that this ultimately is helping is for flood protection of your citizens. We all grew here. I mean, I see across the table, I see Jessica, Randy, Beto, Rob San, Victor, myself. We're all products of Mission High School. We all came out of the same classes, from '91 to '93. Well, he's a little bit younger, but he's done very well. He's class of '96. But, again, I know my, I see 12 seconds left, and I'm one that I can continue talking forever, but, again, I request your approval on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? I do not see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to close this public hearing, and I'm going to open it for discussion by any of the council members.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I heard in the presentation that, that this property was exempt from, from subdivision?
Yeah, I don't necessarily agree with that. I mean, I don't think any property is exempt from, from subdividing. It might be harder to subdivide, because utilities not being in, in, in place, but utilities can be extended to this property, so I wouldn't say that that was a fair assessment.
Okay.
Mr. Garza, I can answer a little bit of that from an engineering perspective, if you would like. I know that it's not public comment, but it's my professional experience.
I, uh-
That would be up to the mayor to decide.
No, I will, I will pass you, Mr. Garza. I have the council discussion. It's open for the council discussion.
So, the question is that you requesting for them to subdivide, and if they do so, would there be a problem with the cement mix plant there? I mean, since they're not going to-
I don't have a problem with the cement plant, but because of the sensitive nature of the project, I do have a problem issuing a CUP. If they go through the process and subdivide the property and rezone the property, just like we had at the previous city council meeting, where Kappa came in, and they did things the right way, then I don't have a problem with that, no.
And can this be approved, subject to their condition?
Certainly.
That they subdivide?
Yeah, but we could-
But then, at that point, they wouldn't need the conditional use permit, because they would comply, because they've gone through the process of subdividing. So, that's the reason for the CUP, is that they're, that it's not a subdivided lot and block.
And the size is 15 acres, so they, they could subdivide for the, for the cement, for five acres, and, and keep the other 10 with the conditional use permit. Can that be possible?
That is possible, yes.
I, I think it's important to, to follow our, our city ordinances as far as subdivision requirements prior to construction. So, that's, I mean, that's just my feeling on, on this. I think that if we, if we allow this, it would, it could, it could be an issue for later requests.
I know time is, time is of an essence for, I mean, for that contract, and, I mean, they're doing something also that is going to be benefiting, you know, the citizens who mentioned there on the levy. Is that something that can be done, kind of like at the same time, to make sure he doesn't lose that contract?
We could approve the portable buildings through the CUP, but hold back on the cement mixing plant while they subdivide and rezone the property.
But he's going to apply tomorrow for the, for the change, rezoning for the, for that section, right?
Whether he does a, a section or the whole thing, that's up to the property owner.
The property owner, so. Any other questions, Mr. Villa?
Well, I mean, since it is far away from any residential subdivisions, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with the, the two-year temporary permit, because it, you know, what is he going to do with that area?
It is, it is in an isolated area, pretty much south of Conway. It is located south, south of our, our sewer plant.
But we don't, that property doesn't have water. They're going to use, they're going to bring in water to, to, to maintain the-
Yeah.
How big are those buildings? Because I can't see it. It's real vague.
141 by 60 feet wide.
One, how many square feet, eight feet is that?
About 8,500, close to that, 8,500 square feet.
8,500 per building?
Each, per building, correct. There's two smaller ones.
You're going to have over 16,000 square feet of a, of building there?
Correct.
Is that going to house equipment or people?
We were told it was just going to be for office use. There are going to be no living quarters, strictly office use, is what we were told.
That's, that's a lot of people in 16,000 square feet.
How long would it take before we get water and sewer in that area?
We're, in talking to Mario Reyna from Melden &amp; Hunt, we're looking at about August of next year.
Yes. We just made a, we're working on a change order for, for it, it'll take us about twelve months before we get water and sewer out there, complete.
I don't know how would the rest of the council feel if we go with CUP for, would one year be a, make a difference?
Mayor, if I could ask a question?
Let me...
It's kinda going towards that. I overheard the gentleman stating that it, they have a contract with the government entity. So is there, have they supplied you with a letter from them stating that this is solely going to be for, I guess they're building the border wall, is that part of the, that's what you...
It's a levy improvement.
It's a levy improvement, okay.
Yes, ma'am, that's a, it's a government job.
So I think it would be very helpful for us if they had something from them stating that this is who they're gonna be working with, and maybe in that way, like, our kinda, our hands are tied, wouldn't it be, if it's coming from them, if it's something that...
Yeah, well, you can put in the condition that if they're working with federal agencies, that, you know, I mean, the letter is great, you know, but as long as they're working with federal agencies and not for private contractors, you know...
And is that something that they could provide us?
Mr. Garza, since you're addressing that, if I may just address you on that a little bit, there's no business license being issued for the site because there's no sales of concrete being sold. It's for sole consumption on that particular project, and that's it. There's no business license being issued, there's no business license being requested for at least two years, that's why the conditional use permit is for two years, been requested, originally for two years. It's not that we wanna ask for more, it's just because of the investment that is being made on the property and on my qualifications, it requires two years.
Mr. Garza, thank you for your comment, Mr. Garza, gotta continue the session. Counsel.
Randy, do you have an opinion? I'd like to get your input.
Sure. We, I know we discussed it among staff, and we don't have an issue with the property the way it is. Obviously, we want the development. We did have, as far as the portable buildings, we're in support of them, and then putting the plant, we, asking however, to go through the process.
So you're, you're saying the conditional use permit for the building, for the portables, but go rezoning as a...
Yes, as staff is presenting.
And Mr. Vela is a hundred percent with a conditional, and so am I with a conditional permit. So we need each individual person.
I guess I'm confused.
My comment was that I'm with Mr. Vela's deal, that we issue the twenty-four months conditional permit, and then revisit it again in conditional, and if they're going to come back with a conditional use permit for extension, at that point, they need to rezone so they can be able to plan accordingly.
And if there's utilities within the twenty-four months, are they gonna be required to connect?
According to what they agreed here, the answer is yes. Not only, not only for this conditional use permit, but for the other, on April also, conditional use permit that they will, they will connect.
Which other one?
The one we already pre-approved, the other eleven acres. This is addition, is it eleven acres or how many acres, Mr. Garza?
Fifteen.
No, this one's fifteen, but the ones from April.
Eleven.
Eleven acres. We approved eleven acres under this conditional use permit for two years, and they want this, basically the same thing with the next fifteen acres, you know? And on both, both conditional use permits, if approved the conditional use permit, they're willing to connect if we get a water and sewer up to line. I don't wanna speak for you all, Mr. Garza, but let me ask you, am I correct with that statement?
Yes, sir. Mayor, if Mr. Martinez, as a city attorney, can draft a memorandum of understanding, we will be more than happy to sign that document, and Ms. Garza, in regards to your concern about utilities, if Mario Reyna hurries up and gets the utilities there tomorrow, I'd much rather have city utilities. So if the utilities are there, we'll tap into it. So with a memorandum of understanding that if the utilities become available before the two-year expiration of the conditional use permit, we will connect at our expense to that connection into the, into the city.
Thank you, Mr. Garza.
Can I ask you a question?
Let me hear Mr. Martinez, since he already stood up and wanted for the chair to recognize him, and I wanna recognize Mr. Martinez.
That's true, we can do an MOI at any point for that, but just to be clear, Mayor, the planning zone is just passing unanimously, so he'll take the four out of five to overturn.
Okay, thank you. Now, Ms. Garza, I will recognize you to ask the question.
And really, this doesn't have anything to do with anything, but what are, what is the ready-mix facility going to provide?
So the, so the levy improvement projects, there's headwall structures and, you know, engineering terms, there's structures that are associated with those improvements.
But you're gonna be making some...
Mixing, they're gonna be buying sand and cement and gravel and mixing it for the use of their project only.
And then, there're gonna be cement trucks moving it to the...
To the job, only to the job. They're not gonna be selling it, you will not be able to call in saying, hey, I wanna buy, I'm pouring a concrete driveway in my house, can I buy ten yards of concrete? No, there's no sales of concrete.
Well, it's sales to the government.
Yes, ma'am.
You're gonna be...
Yes, ma'am, it is tricky.
You have one client, basically.
Correct.
My other question is, you have some property on North Conway?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be not possible to have the, some of this improvements on that North Conway property?
If I can address that a little bit. With my thirteen-year experience...
The project that they're serving is on South Conway.
I know, but it's only, it's only two miles.
I'm sorry.
But they gotta go through Down Conway and...
With my experience in ready-mix operations, it is impractical from a logistics standpoint for the quality of concrete, you've gotta be very close to the site, that's why this site is ideal to be situated, plus, we don't wanna be neighboring single-family homes, and that's why this site is ideal to conduct all of this business, twenty-four months, temporary use, just like our AOI ordinances indicate. So we are following all the AOI guidelines by the city.
How long do you think it'll take you to put in the improvements that you've planned?
The caliche, dirt caliche, the timeline is about six weeks. I'd like to have the site ready, so we would start clearing immediately, maybe as early as later this week, or upon your approval, or beginning of next week. Should take about six weeks, and then offices should start coming in middle of December. The ready-mix facility won't actually be used for the twenty-four months. The way ready-mix works, they've got a lot of work to do dirt-wise, to move millions of yards of dirt on the levy and relocate certain things so that they can start preparing for concrete. So it's gonna take a while, and they're not gonna be pouring concrete twenty-four months, technically, but they do need to bring the portable facility and start setting things up.
Yes.
And the parking lot, is that gonna be, is that gonna have asphalt?
Yes, ma'am, the intention is to be a nine thousand square foot asphalt parking lot, and as Mr. Acevedo requested, a rock pit, we're probably leaning towards paving the entrance to Conway. So we wanna, we wanna have a nice site to...
I know we're not talking about the property on the north, but we went through text-out approval and have an entrance that was approved by text-out, and so that is being built on the north side, and I would do the same with this property on the south side and go through the text-out approval process.
But this one, this one, you're, it looks like they're planning to have a lot, a lot more employees, basically.
Correct, it's a larger project, yes, ma'am.
My recommendation, if I'm gonna go with the conditional use permit, is to have that asphalt and a, either asphalt to the, to the street or concrete.
I must admit that he is my brother, but he put me under the gun to come up with a site plan very quickly to meet the city's requirements of a site plan for the conditional use permit, so that's why it's very rudimentary on that. We, upon clearing the property, we will be surveying the entire topography of the property and establishing the proper drainage patterns and everything for the property, and we will extend, so I will, I will work with, with Mr. Acevedo in providing staff with the necessary plans for that, construction documents for that.
Well, I think at this point, with a conditional use permit, we can ask that it be an asphalt parking with a concrete to the...
Yes.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I can make a motion for my fellow council members. Due to the measure of the business that is gonna help to improve the levy, I would like to make a motion to do the conditional use permit for twenty-four months, as approved by the planning zoning, with a cement-mix plan, with a memorandum of understanding that if water and sewer goes by there before the two-year period that is connected and with a parking lot with cement or in asphalt for sure.
Go ahead and, go ahead and add the conditions, Ms. Garza wants, that is...
The asphalt, second, Mayor.
The asphalt to the entrance and getting approved text-out entrance also. And this, I'll open it for a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, the four-five rule does not apply, Mr. Martinez.
Good luck and thank you for developing in Mission.
Ordinance forty-eight fifty-six for your record, for the record. Ordinance forty-eight fifty-six has been approved for the record.
I can talk to the...
Okay, I'm calling for two-point-zero consent agenda item. I would like to remind the council that you can highlight any of the agenda items, that if you wanna take them individually, if not, we'll take them collaboratively, and that's item two-point-one and two-point-two, and two-point-three has an approval of a resolution sixteen twenty-four, and two-point-four has a resolution of approval of sixteen twenty-five, two-point-five, two-point-six, and two-point-seven.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Wait, I'd like to pull two-point-six.
We have an agenda full of two-point-six, okay.
I second that one.
Well, you don't need, she doesn't need a second, it's in being pulled, two-point-six is being pulled. Go ahead. Mr. Plata, you have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with exception of two-point-six.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda item except for two-point-six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, consent agenda items have been approved, and I will call for two-point-six authorization. Will you please address the council and address Ms. Garza's concern? Do you have a concern?
I would just like to, you know, more, just to present...
Okay, more information.
Good afternoon, City Council, item two-point-six, it's authorization to solicit for competitive proposals for the roof replacement for the Spearmint Memorial Library and the Museum Historical, and staff and city manager recommends approval. This is to replace the roof for the museum and the library.
Do we have any other information other than that we're replacing it? What else?
We are going for proposals so we can form a committee and review proposals and hire a contractor to...
I guess your question is, do we have a scope of work already to...
Yes, we do.
That she would like to review.
It's a complete tear off of the, we've been having a lot of leaks in the museum and also in the library, so we're planning to replace a whole roof on both buildings. We already have plans already designed.
Can you provide the council individually a copy of the scope of work so they can review it, unless, Ms. Garza, you want specific questions right now?
Well, I would like to see the scope of work, and if there's a budget, do you have a budget yet or not yet?
We do have a budget, yes.
Well, I guess if we could see the scope of work, that would be nice.
Keep in mind, we do have an architect to oversee this, and we also have a structural engineer that's overseeing, and the structural engineer and the architects were the ones that developed the scope of work, am I correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Riquelme, are you the plans for these buildings?
Do you have plans?
We do, yes.
I think that whenever, sorry, Ms. Norrie, whenever such items come in, I would like to see the architect and the engineer here because we have questions about this very permanent, like, this is a great big project, we've been having problems with leaking in those two buildings for a very long time, and so we wanna make sure that this project goes off, and if we have questions...
Like schematics or something that we could see?
Yes, ma'am, we have those too.
We have, okay.
Yes, and if I may, Mayor?
Go ahead, no, no, no.
Yes, we can provide those to the council. One of the things on the library roof, in particular, is we are looking at the window components that have created some of the issues on the leaks as well. As a part of the alternate on the roof design, we have met with the architects and staff to determine, for example, the windows on the north side that have created a lot of issues, to do away, basically do away with those windows, or come up with the alternative of that, because that was one of the issues as far as the structure with the leaks, but it is a complete renovation of the roof along with those components that we felt that were part of the issues, such as the windows and the resealing of the, of the building itself. But we can definitely provide those to you.
It would be nice to have them come in and, like Jessica said, to have a presentation by the architect and engineer on the project.
Yes, ma'am.
Because this is not cheap, right?
No.
Nor is it.
We're talking million dollars muscle medals, right?
Yes.
That's a lot of money, so I really would like to see the design, and I'm sure that the rest of the council would as well.
Well, that's it, you know, I would like to see it also, you know, as far as that is concerned, but I don't wanna stop the request for bids.
But before you request for bids, you need to see what it's gonna, what the design is.
I think it's kinda like what Ms. Norrie is saying, it's kinda when we were discussing the city hall, the event center, you know, when we went to San Antonio to discuss it, at first it was supposed to have like a little auditorium, but after discussing it, seeing it, the cost and all of that, we decided like we had other ideas, and so we lessened that. So I think that I wanna see something in front, like, what is it gonna look like, what's it gonna take, because maybe what they envision is not what we envision for the building to be.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
We do have a scheduled workshop for tomorrow that's entitled City Projects, that we can definitely provide the plans tomorrow to review for council so they can see that, the plans and specifications for this project.
Yeah, but if we don't approve this, then we have to approve it either or the next city council meeting.
That's be fine, I mean, we've been, I don't think two weeks is gonna hurt us.
Well, for me, for me, because I've been inside the library when it's been raining, when it's been raining, you know, and our children and our citizens are in there, and you see the rain coming from the roof, you know, that, and it's been a while since we've been working with this project, so time is of essence.
Which is my question, it's been a while, how can it just, how can we just now present in this?
The design was already finalized, so we're ready to solicit for...
The last time that we brought it up, there was no architect in mind, and no architect in the, in the, in the scope, and then added the architect and, right?
Yes, good afternoon. The reason why it's taken us this long is because we had to do our due diligence, we visited other locations to look at similar roof systems that the architect and the engineer are proposing for us, and we were able to define which one is in the best interest of the city in working in conjunction with the architect and the engineer.
And we have a committee, right?
Yes, sir. The reason also is that we're going out for competitive proposals to be able to negotiate the pricing and apply value engineering to the project to make sure that we stay within budget and that we bring the best value to the city on these projects.
So that value engineering's already been done?
That's an option. Once competitive proposals come in, we have the right to request our best and final offers pending value engineering that can be applied to the proposals.
Okay, I see that those are the types of things that I think the council should be involved in because value engineering basically is a fancy word for saying, okay, you're getting this instead of that, even though that's what you really want. So I think it's important for us to know what exactly we're requesting proposals for.
Most definitely, and the proposals, the specs and the plans were generalized by the architect, so we can have the ability to negotiate the price upon receiving our proposals. So, but we can definitely present the specs and plans and some renderings that were presented to us by the architect.
If I may, Mayor, also, Mr. Plata, also, just to reiterate what staff was mentioning, part of it also, the process, because of the historical museum being a historical building, there's a process that we have to follow that, that because, because it being a historic, we have to, the process is longer, and so that's, that's part of the reason also why.
We had to meet with the historical commission so we can make sure that we comply with their requirements and their policies and procedures. The architect and the engineer have been working with them hand-in-hand to make sure that we don't lose the marker that we have on the building.
So you, what's the wishes of the council? Do you wanna approve it, approve, or do you wanna table it?
I would like to table it, but, I mean, and then see it next time, but I would like to see those designs before then, and if we can see them tomorrow, that would be great.
Sure, I'll get them ready.
Good.
And I mean, we've had a special meeting before, Mayor, maybe that's something if it's of urgency, as soon as we all are on the same page with how the project's gonna come along, maybe we can hold a special meeting before our next meeting, I'm just saying.
Okay.
And I know it is an important line item.
So, that being said, I move to table item.
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and second to table item... We have a motion and a second to table item 2.6, and this is an open final discussion for a call for a vote. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Item 2.6 is tabled for the record. 3.0 approvals and authorization, 3.1 final plat approval, Mr. Osavell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, item 3.1 is a final plat approval of Mayberry Court Subdivision. This is a five acre tract out of about 27-8 of West Edition and Shoreline subdivision. The property is owned R1, and Aaron Bay is the developer. The engineer is Ino Hossa Engineering. The subject site is located half a mile south of East Two Mile Road along the west side of Mayberry, as can be seen there on the vicinity map. Seventeen single-family residential lots were constructed, all with City of Mission Water and Sewer Services. Drainage was accomplished by 24-inch drain lines. The developer also installed swales along the rear of the property, and the county is also widening the drain ditch that's immediately north of the proposed subdivision. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved unanimously this subdivision. Staff is also recommending approval, as is our city manager. Item 3.1 is now before you.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve it in a second. It is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.1 is approved. 3.2, Mr. Osavell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, item 3.2 is for final plat approval of Periquito Subdivision. This is a 7.557 acre tract of land that's also part or portion of shares 3, 4, and 5 San Jose subdivision. The property is AOI, and the developers Juan Miguel Garcia and Ismael Garcia. The engineers, B.I.G. Engineering. Mayor and council, if you recall, this is the subdivision that recently came for approval at the city council, and they were proposing 20-foot streets. There was some discussion about the front entrance being so limited. After the meeting, I did uncover some documents and some city council action that was granted back in January of 2010, where they granted access to the Catholic Diocese Church for the use of a 30-foot access easement along the north side of Trinity, in between a residential lot that's labeled their number 11, and in between the drain ditch to the east. So that is pretty much all that they have between them and the ditch, 30 feet, and what they're proposing is a 24-foot access leading from Trinity to the subdivision. Now, they are still recommending or requesting that the streets be approved at 26 feet. The fire marshal or the fire chief did agree to the 26-foot streets. They're also seeking a variance for this subdivision to be private and gated. They will be having City of Mission Water and Sewer Services, a total of five residential lots are proposed, and the drainage that's being proposed is, there's going to be an onsite detention pond, and they're going to be draining directly into the ditch to the east. The P&amp;Z and staff are recommending approval, as is our city manager. Item 3.2 is now before you.
In such a big lots and gated subdivision, why would they want to have any exceptions? I mean, why?
I'm sorry, Ruben, what did you say?
I mean, in such a private and big lots subdivision, I imagine there's going to be big houses there. Why would they want for us to approve to give them an exception? I mean, why, why don't they comply with the city requires?
The city standards.
So, aren't they asking, aren't they requesting for?
I thought they were asking for a variance.
Yeah.
Well, yes, they're asking for a variance, but that was decided the last time we brought it before. The variance was with the chief of green today, and the council said they would have two instead, just like everyone else. So what they're asking for relates to the entrance?
Okay, well, I mean, it kind of seems that the entrance is limited, and their hands are tied, basically.
And you said that, excuse me, you said the chief approved the entrance?
The chief approved the variance request to have a 26-foot street internally.
Internally, but how about the entrance?
The entrance is what it is, there's no way to get more than what is currently there.
Would a fire truck fit?
Who's, what about that detention pond? Can that detention pond be modified?
Sure, it can be modified, but your entrance off of Trinity is still going to be limited.
Oh, so it doesn't join the entrance, the pond?
No, the pond is further north.
Oh, I just couldn't tell with the arrow.
Yeah, no, that, what you see.
Is it not right there at the entrance?
No, that's the drain ditch. The pond is kind of like where the red arrow is pointing to. That's the detention pond. What you see further down on the screen is the actual ditch, kind of curves in that area in the front along Trinity.
Oh, is in the back, okay.
Do we have something similar to this with another subdivision?
I don't think.
No, this one is very unique, where you're dealing with the limited access.
And this is family oriented, am I correct?
This is a family oriented.
Not for sale.
Not for sale, it's going to be used more as a family partition, correct?
But we cannot approve based on that, right? I mean?
We cannot approve based on that because that is what it is going to be now, in the future, they could sell.
There's no provision where you can limit the sales of land.
What were you doing?
On your explanation, you put a variance to allow subdivision to be private and gated.
That is a requirement on any private subdivision, that the streets be dedicated as private streets where the city will no longer need to maintain those streets. It's up to the property owners to.
Yeah, but the question that I want to ask is, you don't indicate the variance for the street?
We are proposing a 26-foot street now. Like our city attorney said, we could approve it, subject to meeting the city standards on the street, which is what was recommended at the last city council meeting.
The only thing they can't meet is the entrance.
The only thing that it cannot meet is the entrance, correct?
So it's wide and then opens up, or what?
It's narrow and then it opens up.
And again, to the question that I asked, is it narrow where a fire truck can fit into it? You know, that's why I asked if the fire chief or the fire marshal both have approved the measurement because, because, you know?
For responders.
For the first responders, that's the only concern that I have.
When this item was proposed to you a while back, the recommendation proposal was approved by myself and the fire marshal, but the council decided to maintain the city standards of 32. Since that meeting, I have not met with anybody in regards to this project, I'm not sure about the fire marshal at this point, but at that time, yes, I did agree to a 26 from the 20.
And, you know, 26 from the 20 at the entrance?
No, the street itself, sir.
The interior streets?
The entrance is bottlenecked, and also the gated area entrance is also smaller than the 26.
How wide is the entrance?
Thank you.
We have the engineers of the project here.
Can you, can you address that to, I'm just concerned about a fire truck getting stuck or?
I understand.
Or fire truck coming in in the middle of the night, and the ladders, the ladders are extended on their side?
Yes.
You know?
Renee Baradah for the record, representing the owner on this property.
Thank you, sir.
We all have, there is limited access, just the nature of the property when they purchased it, there's a, I believe, a, it's 24 feet, a 24-foot access easement, like perpetual access easement into the property. We can't go any wider in that, so we're going to maintain that width that's there. Speaking with the fire department, that's sufficient room for their vehicles to get through. Internally, the, it's not a family, yes, sir.
Is that okay, the 24-inch?
We have a dual entry at a subdivision. The requirement is 16 feet in and out on gates. This is a single gate, which I believe the maximum width is just above 19 feet, if I remember correctly. So yes, the fire truck can get in, the maximum width with mirrors and everything is 10 feet on a fire apparatus.
Okay.
Yeah, because you're going to have the 20-foot, I mean, 24-foot access, but then your gate's going to take up some room on either end.
It'll be a single sliding gate, that the homeowners, I believe, would have, you know, access.
Remote or something.
Remote or something. Yeah, it's for a family, it's like a family partition. There's brothers, and then their siblings, their daughters, sons would reside here. I think there was a note that I proposed to Jaime that there'd be no further subdividing after this, you know, any more additional partitions after this. They want to keep it, you know, like a ranch style, that's the reason why they wanted to lessen the width of the streets. Going back and forth, and we had, working with the city, they agreed on a 26-foot wide street. And we are proposing laydown curbs, so if for any reason you need to go, you know, over the curb, it can be done easily. It's not a curbing gutter, but it's a gutter also, but it's a laydown curb. And there are going to be large homes on here, and it's going to be minimal, minimal traffic that's going to be on this property.
I don't have any more questions. Anybody else have a question? Do we have a motion?
My motion would be to agree to the 24-foot access, but require the city ordinance requirements on the interior street.
Of what?
32.
32. 32 feet, back to back.
So the street to be 32?
And the entrance, because of the, because of the situation, I mean, they don't have, they can't, can't be less than that, wider.
So we're already making an exception on the entrance, right? A variance?
Correct.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. This is open for discussion. Stavella, any take?
No, no, tell me, that's fine.
So, Choa?
She's gone.
She's gone for the day.
No other question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
3.2 is approved, Mr. Osavell. 3.3, Mr. Carrillo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 3.3 is to reschedule the Monday, November 11th, 2019 city council meeting, move it to Tuesday, November the 12th, and this is due to City Hall being closed on the 11th for Veterans Day.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the movement of the city council. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ms. Carrillo, the rescheduling is approved.
Thank you.
3.4, resolution 1626.
Yes, Mayor and Council, resolution 1626 is distributing the 120 authorized votes for the election of the appraisal district board of directors. Mr. Amador Riquenes was nominated by the city council to be placed on the ballot, and Mayor Panga's recommendation is the distribution of the 120 authorized votes to go to Amador Riquenes.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion, Ms. Garza.
I have a question, because we've never really discussed this item before, or I don't think we have.
Previously, yes, and other.
Well, I mean, we've had it on, but, the 120 votes, do all cities get the 120 votes?
No, ma'am, if you look at your supporting documents, it all depends on the population of the cities, so like City of Mission only gets 120 votes.
Do all taxing entities get votes?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Even the school, the school districts and everybody gets votes.
That's also related to the population?
Yes, ma'am.
Population or tax or value? It goes by tax value?
You know what, maybe it's tax value, Councilman Plata, you're correct. It's probably on valuations, mhm.
So what's the total number of votes that they have?
There's like 5,000, 5,030 votes total for all of the entities in El Paso County.
5,030.
Mhm, the county has like 500 and, you know.
Which includes the school districts?
Correct.
And how many candidates are up for this position?
I believe there's like eight.
Nine.
There's nine.
Really? Do you have a list of that?
Yeah, they should, they're in the packet.
It should be in your packet.
It's on page 180, Ms. Jessica.
Yes.
You have Alberto Carvenas, Alejandro Cantu, Amador Riquenes, Roberto Perez, David Hernandez, Eddie Betancourt, Henry Howell, Joe Olivares, Mario Flores, Monte Churchill, Orlando Lozano, Pierre Garcia, Reynaldo Perez, Richard Garza, and Sabi Matani.
And this is done every?
Every two years.
And the whole board goes, I mean, they all go at the same time?
Yes, they all go at the same time.
So we could have a totally new board at any given time?
Yes, ma'am.
During the election.
Unless we reelect our own, the one we've had before, which is Mr. Riquenes.
More votes for next time?
More votes?
Yeah.
He's been about 16 years.
Yeah, he's, well, he's been.
He's, yeah, he got off for a few years, and then was nominated back in.
So.
So for this particular position, it's only going to be one of these nine to continue?
No, but you can distribute the 120 votes any way you want to.
No, I understand.
My recommendation was to cluster all into him.
There's five slots, there's five, right, there's five positions open. So five people are going to.
This is a list of all the people?
Yes, ma'am.
And so five of these are going to get the seats?
Yes, ma'am.
The top five voters.
They need 780 votes to get in, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I move for approval, mayor.
We have a motion?
I have.
We already have a motion and a second.
I didn't want to call for a vote until I was sure that I could see that everybody's questions had been answered. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, the 120 votes are cast, and we have a Mr. Riquenes. 3.5, Mr. Velmaris.
Good afternoon. Item 3.5, authorized staff to execute contract to the Warren Group Architects, Inc., for design and construction management of police fire substation. Staff seeking authorization to execute a contract with the Warren Group Architects for the project design development services and construction management for the police and fire substation in accordance with the Texas Professional Services Procurement Act. After negotiation with the Warren Group in accordance with Texas Government Code 2254.004, contract for professional services of architect, engineer, or surveyor, a fair and reasonable fixed percentage rate of 7% of the total construction cost was agreed upon. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
For the record, that'd be Police Fire Station Number 6.
That's correct.
Okay, for the record.
And that's located where, Mayor?
It's in between South Inspiration and Benson Palm.
On military?
Military, that's.
Just for the public?
Yes. Any, do, do I hear a motion?
Oh, still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize staff to execute the contract. This is open for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, Mr. Velmaris, you're authorized to. 3.6, Mr. Velmaris.
Item 3.6 is authorization to purchase Procureware software for the purchasing department from Bentley, a sole source vendor. Procureware is an integrated procurement and bent management system for supplier management, sourcing, and contract management pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 252.022 general exemption, a procurement of items that are available from only one source, including items that are available from only one source because of pending corporate rights and secret processes and natural monopolies. City of Mission will be able to centralize procurement data for informed decision-making, drive consistent adoption of procurement best practices across the organization, shorten the purchase time of goods and services, and ensure healthy supplier competition to increase quality and achieve price objectives. Cost of the software is $14,500. Cost of the software is fourteen thousand five hundred. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second? And this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point six. Three point seven, Mr. Vilmaris.
Item three point seven, authorization for emergency payment for repairs on fire department apparatuses done at sudden smart emergency group by certified EVT technicians. Emergency payment of sixty-two thousand zero thirty-nine point fifty-three for repairs on fire department apparatuses done at sudden smart and emergency group by a certified EVT technician. Technicians working on fire apparatuses are required to be certified emergency vehicle technicians to minimize costs and liability. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval. Obviously, the repairs have already been made.
Yes, ma'am. They due to an emergency, and to minimize liability on the city's behalf, we moved forward, and that's the reason why we're presenting the cost to council for approval.
Sorry.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Now we can continue the discussions.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
What a new one cost?
A new one?
But the repairs have already been done, right?
The repairs have been done.
I'm curious as to what a new one would cost.
You know, we're looking at about a million dollars.
Oh.
So, we're looking at options right now for possible leasing, but, you know, right now, we're looking at our costs.
And, and if I may, ma'am, this is a repair on several of the fire apparatuses.
Oh.
Several?
Yes.
Yes.
Which means that they're working now.
Yes. Yes, sir. There was three fire apparatus that were worked on. That's correct. We were able to bring them back up to par to make sure that we avoid any liability on the city's behalf.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then, good job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point seven is approved, Mr. Vilmaris. You can... Just position the, the agenda item. Three point eight, Ms. Vela?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item three point eight is the approval of the August two thousand nineteen financial report. The adjusted beginning fund balance was fifteen million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars, and total revenues for the month were eleven million, seven hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and two dollars, with total expenditures of twelve million, six hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars, leaving an adjusted ending fund balance of fourteen million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second, and any discussion on the financial report? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point eight. The finance report is approved, Ms. Vela. Three point nine?
Item three point nine is the tax collection report for the month of September two thousand nineteen. The twenty eighteen total adjusted tax levy was twenty million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, and the amount of collections as of September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen is nineteen million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-one cents, which represents ninety-six point eighty-six percent of the total tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
Still moved. Second.
Second. I have a question. The ninety-six point eighty-six of tax levy, is that gonna be the final one for that, for this budget?
That'll be the final. There's some collections in the month of October that get accrued, but they're very minimal, so...
Very minimal. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point nine, Ms. Vela, it's approved.
Thank you.
Three point ten, Chief Dominguez?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item three point ten is authorization to allow the purchase of a firearm to honorably-retired peace officer Joel Raúl Laralde, retired Assistant Chief of Police, in accordance with Texas Government Code Section six one four oh fifty-one. Honorably-retired peace officer Joel Laralde has requested to purchase his Glock seventeen Generation Four nine millimeter service weapon, serial number B A C G dash five two six from the Mission Police Department. Under Texas Government Code Section one six four point zero five one, an honorably-retired peace officer may purchase his service weapon from a governmental entity in which he or she was commissioned. The purchase price is four hundred and nine dollars. Joel Laralde will be required to sign a whole harmless agreement. Staff and city manager recommend approval of this item.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Open up for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three ten, Chief Dominguez is approved. Three eleven...
Item three eleven is authorization to pay radio subscription invoice to the Rio Grande Valley Communications Group for F Y two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty. This payment is for the City Mission Public Safety radio subscription to the Rio Grande Valley Communications Group. The one-year radio subscription will pay for four hundred and twenty-six police and fire radios. The subscription also includes five radio consoles located at the Mission Police Department's Communication Center. The total cost for the one-year subscription is fifty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second, and this is open for discussion. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three eleven is approved. Chief Dominguez, three twelve?
Item three twelve is authorization to accept the City Mission Technology Project grant from the Office of the Governor. The grant will allow the Mission Police Department to purchase a total of fifteen WatchGuard in-car video camera systems, which will replace the existing in-car video cameras. Our current in-car video camera system has been operational since two thousand and nine. There is no cash match required for this grant from the City of Mission. Staff and city manager recommend approval to accept this grant.
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve, three point twelve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point twelve is approved. Chief Dominguez, three thirteen?
Item three point thirteen is authorization to purchase an entry into a subscription license renewed upgrade with Insight Public Sector through U.S. Communities Contract four four zero 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 six six four four. Insight provides Mission Police with WatchGuard firewall security services and an advanced persistent threats blocker license. WatchGuard Firewall protects all our electronic equipment at the main police station and the south police station from viruses trying to penetrate our main servers. The contract is a three-year contract. The total cost of the three-year contract is ten thousand nine thirty-one sixty-five. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and three, three point thirteen to be approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point thirteen is approved. Chief Dominguez, three point fourteen?
Item three point fourteen is authorization to purchase fifteen WatchGuard in-camera systems through Bible Contract five two four dash one seven. The total cost of the fifteen camera systems is eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is the amount we just, you just approved for the grant. Staff and city manager recommend approval of this purchase.
I move for approval.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point fourteen. Chief Dominguez is approved, and calling for three point fifteen. Chief Dominguez?
Item three point one five, authorization to purchase a DVD disc publishing system for WatchGuard body worn cameras and patrol unit cameras for the Mission Police Department via state-approved contract, Bible Contract five two four dash one seven. The purchase of this DVD disc publishing system is to adhere to the Texas State law regarding the forwarding of video evidence to the Idaho County District Attorney's Office and the U.S. Attorney's Office for prosecution of defendants arrested by the Mission Police Department. The total cost of the DVD disc publishing system is ten thousand dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve, three point five one five. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point one five is approved. Chief Dominguez, and calling for three point sixteen.
Item three point one six is authorization to purchase a WatchGuard interview room camera system through Bible Contract number five two seven dash one seven. The purchase of this interview recording system is to adhere to Texas law regarding the recording of video statements of certain crimes and also statements of witnesses and victims for evidence to the Idaho County District Attorney's Office and the U.S. Attorney's Office for prosecution of defendants arrested by the Mission Police Department. The purchase will allow outdated equipment to be replaced. The total cost of the interview recording camera system is ten thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, three point sixteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point sixteen. Chief Dominguez is approved. Calling for three point seventeen, Mr. Salinas. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I come before you, seeking authorization to award bid for the purchase of liquid aluminum sulfate for the North and South Water Treatment Plant. The City of Mission has accepted an open for bid responses for liquid aluminum sulfate. Staff recommendation is to award bid to Cantric Chemical U.S. LLC, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting on specifications. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on a nice needed basis throughout the one-year base term. The total cost, Mayor, for the one-year term will be approximately sixty-five thousand dollars, will be spent on this chemical, and the price, the rate price is point ten seventy-four cents per pound. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I move to approve to the lowest responsible bidder of the four bid responses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point seventeen is approved, Mr. Salinas, and I'm calling for three point eighteen.
Yes, sir, Mayor and City Council members. Item three point eighteen is the authorization to award bid for liquid aluminum sulfate for the North and South Water Treatment Plant. The City of Mission has accepted an open for bid responses for liquid aluminum sulfate. Staff recommendation is to award bid to Cantric Chemicals U.S. LLC, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting on specifications. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on a nice needed basis throughout the one-year term. The total cost throughout the one-year term approximately will be two hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year, and the cost for the chemical is point zero sixty-nine cents per pound. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I move to approve to the lowest responsible bidder.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point eighteen is approved, Mr. Salinas, and I'm calling for three point one nine.
Yes, sir, Mayor and City Council members. Item three point nineteen is the authorization to approve second and final one-year renewal option for electrical repair and maintenance services for the water treatment plants, wastewater treatment plant, industrial pretreatment plant, and water distribution division. Again, staff seeking authorization to extend contract for the second and final one-year renewal option at zero percent increase in rate. We have the attached letter. This agreement will extend contract from December twentieth, two thousand nineteen, to December nineteenth, two thousand twenty. The performance of electrical repair and maintenance will be on a nice needed basis for the remainder of the one-year renewal option. Again, for the rates, Mayor, master electrician will be at thirty-four dollars per hour, and assistant electrician will be at fifty dollars per hour, and the total cost, Mayor, that we spend on this contract throughout the years, it's approximately between three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars, more or less, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I move to approve the second and final one-renewal option with a zero percent increase.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, three point one nine. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point one nine is approved, Mr. Salinas, and I'm calling for three point twenty, Mr. Flores.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item three point twenty is the approval of a golf ball retrieval contract between PG Golf LLC and Sherry Municipal Golf Course. PG Golf LLC is a golf ball retrieval company that recovers golf balls from the lakes and water hazards on the golf course. PG Golf will pay Sherry Municipal Golf Course five cents per usable ball. The agreement is for two years, starting upon approval. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mayor?
We have a motion to approve and a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For my curiosity.
Sure.
How many do they usually find in that?
Well, we haven't had anybody out there in about three years, so there's gonna be a ton in there, yeah.
Really?
So it should be pretty good.
What do you, what do you do with the...
They're not our golf balls. The people lose them in the lake.
Right.
But I'm not gonna go down there and get them, so they're going to.
And what do you do with them?
They, they resell them in various places, or take cords.
They take them with them?
Yes, they take them and pay us.
Oh, I see.
Sometimes you resell them, you resell them to the, to the ones that, like...
At Academy.
The practice, the rangers.
Oh, yeah.
The rangers, the rangers and stuff.
And that's a going rate, five cents? We can ask for more?
If nobody's come in three years, and, you know, they're the first ones to come, that's, it's a pretty reasonable...
I would like to know how much is they're going to.
It's gonna be a quarterly thing, so we'll, we'll know.
Put in your report.
Yeah, and then we'll have somebody when they go count.
When, when we highlight the...
Make sure we get everything out of it.
When we highlight the golf course on, on the agenda item, you can put it in there.
Put a line item on the financials.
We could send fire down there in the divers, I guess, but...
Is that what they do? They'd send a diver?
Yeah. The insurance is on there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion?
I'm sure they're not playing golf.
We have a motion and...
Second.
Second. Second. Second. Any discussion?
Can you imagine they play golf?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries three-point-twenty is approved, Mr. Flores, and I'm calling for three-point-twenty-one.
Three-point-twenty-one is the approval of the revision of the fee structure for Cherry Municipal Golf Course. We got together with the golf advisory board and myself, and last time there was a revision to the rates was June of two thousand and thirteen. We feel that it's way past due for an adjustment, so the Cherry Municipal Golf Course Advisory Board, city and manager and staff recommend approval.
So you both feel comfortable with that?
We had two meetings on it. I think we are pretty happy with it.
And you recommend it too?
Yeah, and it was mentioned in the last advisory board meeting that every two years we look at things, you know, six years is a long time, so.
Yeah.
So if somebody wants to go play golf, how much is it going to increase by?
Well, it's actually a decrease in certain items. What happened in two thousand and thirteen is they increased rates and then added a discount, so pretty much defeating the purpose of that. So we're going to eliminate that discount and then be at a set rate for everyone.
A flood rate.
Move for approval, Mayor?
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any final discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries three-point-two-one is approved, Mr. Flores.
Thank you.
And three-point-two-two, Chief Sanchez, Resolution sixteen-twenty-seven. Am I correct, Ms. Garza?
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor and Council, I'm here to present item three-point-two-two. Seeking approval for Resolution sixteen-twenty-seven, authorizing to enter into a master lease purchasing agreement with PNC Equipment Finance for the purchase of firewall apparatus and designate the mayor or city manager as the authorized representative. The leasing agreement will be for ten years to include a ten-year maintenance agreement. Option to purchase will be offered after the ten years. The first payment will be made in fiscal year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven and fifty-four cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
This is why this is not in your budget item for this year.
Correct.
May I move to approve?
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Garza, you second?
Yes, sir.
Opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries three-point-two-twenty-two, Resolution sixteen-twenty-seven is approved, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes.
Three-point-two-twenty-three, Mr. Cardoso?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item three-point-two-three is the authorization to accept FY twenty nineteen Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars with ninety-three cents. For this grant, it is to pay for a portion of the salary of the emergency management staff. The city must maintain an emergency management plan, conduct and document exercises, submit an after-action reports and improvement plan. Be in compliance with the National Incident Management System. We must be one-hundred percent in compliance with NIMS, CAS objectives and metrics. We must submit work, plan, task and timely submissions and progress of financial reports to the state. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries three-point-two-twenty-three. Mr. Cardoso is approved.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm calling for three-point-twenty-four. Mr. Terraz?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item three-point-twenty-four. Authorization to award bids to Moore William for Benson Pond Development Improvements. We received six bid, six bid responses. The lowest bidder was Moore William, who is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of five hundred and forty-nine thousand with seventy-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. The construction cost of this project will be reimbursed to the city by the tax income and reimbursement zone as per the reimbursement agreement approved by the city council on March eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
May I move to approve to the lowest responsible bidder of the six bidder?
We have a motion and a second. I have a question.
Yes, Mayor.
Authorized to award bids for what?
For the, for the construction of the sewer line, for the development of Benson Pond Station.
Sewer and water lines?
Just the sewer.
Water's already there?
Just sewer, not water.
No. And is water already there?
Yes, water's already there.
Okay. Just, just because it doesn't say there, it's for sewer, you know, until the public will know that, that we're awarding this bid for sewer purposes.
Correct. Yes, Mayor.
Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mayor, I'm going to, I'm going to abstain.
You're going to abstain?
Abstain, yes.
Okay. For the record, let it show Ms. Carrio that Ms. Garza abstains. So it's four, four-zero?
Four-zero.
Four-zero, want to abstain?
Abstain.
Want to abstain for the record? Thank you, Ms. Garza.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terraz. Three-point-two-five, Ms. Casares?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I come before you seeking authorization to purchase a Chevy Tahoe for our media relations department. That's via state-approved BuyBoard Contract number five-twenty-one-dash-one-six in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, seventy-six. The purchase of the vehicle for item three-point-two-five would come from the PEG or the Public Educational Governmental Fund, which are the cable television franchise fees that we receive from Spectrum. Staff and city manager have recommended approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? Do I, second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries three-point-two-five. Ms. Casares, you have yourself a.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had a question for Randy.
On what item?
For that one. For what we just approved. When it comes to.
The chair will recognize you even though the, the approval has already happened.
Oh, really?
For the record.
Well, I can ask her later.
Go ahead, go ahead and ask.
I was just wondering if you're looking into the PEG funding and what else we can purchase for that department?
Yes, and, and the PEG funding can be utilized for any and all capital improvements or capital expenditures, so.
No staff.
No staff or salaries, no.
That's fine. I just, I know that we haven't utilized that funding for quite a amount of time, so we have a good amount there.
Yes, that's correct.
I'd like for it to be used.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm calling for three-point-two-six, Ms. Bella. Budget amendments.
Ms. Bella, again.
Item three-point-twenty-six is the approval of the attached budget amendments. I have two, one in the Designated Purpose Fund and one in the Mission Economic Development Fund. For the first one, we have revenues and expenditures of, it's a transposition on the numbers. I know on the paperwork I had eighty-nine thousand, seven forty-five, but the right amount should be eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-five. And it's for the approval of the Mission, City of Mission Technology Project Grant. We'll be getting revenues from the Office of the Governor, which will be used for machinery and equipment for the police department. And in the MDC Fund, we have a budget amendment of thirty-six thousand, which is an amendment for the Small Business Fund programs, and this item was approved by the MDC Board on October twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Bella, I recognize you, Ms. Bella. There's a second, and this is open for discussion. Ms. Garza, you have a discussion or just wanted to second the motion?
I'm good.
No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries three-point-two-six. Ms. Bella is approved.
Thank you.
We, we don't have any unfinished business in four-point-zero, and now we'll open five-point-zero, routine matters. What, five-point-one, Mr. City Manager's comments?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to invite the community to join us at the Halloween Family Festival that will take place this Thursday, October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, from six to nine p.m. at the Leo Peña Placito Park. Also, we are preparing for, the city departments are preparing for the First Annual Mission Veterans Festival and Weekend full of events to include our First Annual Veterans Parade on Saturday, November the ninth, from three to five p.m. We do have a list of, of events for the, for the weekend, starting with November the eighth. We do have a flag-laying ceremony at Texas State Veteran Cemetery at four p.m. The parade at November the ninth, from three to five p.m. We do have entertainment from, at five p.m. Here at Five-by-Five Brewery Company with live music, food and vendors and kid rides. We do also have Veterans Benefit Fair with the, at the City of Mission Parks and Recreation Building from five to eight, and a cook-off from nine to six p.m. At the corner of Business Eighty-three and Bryan, a IBCA sanctioned event all November ninth. We do have on November the tenth as well, chili cook-off from one to seven, Cars and Stripes Car Show from two to five-thirty at Five-by-Five Brewery at, that's November the tenth. And on November the eleventh, we do have a golf tournament at eight a.m. At Cherry Municipal Golf Course, free for all veterans. And any, any and all information can be accessed through our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pedes. Any other item? I'll call five-point-two. I do want to add another event that's not listed there, and that is that on Saturday, and Saturday is November the.
Second.
The, the ninth?
The ninth.
Saturday is November the ninth, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
November the ninth, from nine a.m. to twelve noon, the Leo Peña Veterans Park, the park for the veterans park will be open for visitations, for visitations. We're going to open it for visitation, so we can let the public know and anybody, any veterans that, that want to go by there, nine a.m. to twelve noon, we'll have it open at the time for, on that day. I know the event started, the event started with one event honoring the veterans, and now we have a four-day event, you know, which is, it's a great problem. Well, actually, not a problem, it's an honor, honor to be able to honor our veterans for the first time in the City of Mission, based on the information that I have, unless somebody else has other information that the veterans have been honored in this magnitude before in the City of Mission. So my hat's off to any veteran that has served or have died in the line of duty also, you know, and my, my hat's off to them as far as that is concerned. Another item under five-point-two, I do want to let the public know, the citizens of Mission and the audience here, to let you know that even though the City of Mission does not have a city election, there are ten major propositions the state of Texas has, is asking the citizens of Texas to either pass or not pass. And, you know, that, so I'm asking for you to express your opinion on these ten propositions that are out there, you know? I will not go into the details of them, but I just want to let you know that, that early voting is here and the general election, and, and for us, for us citizens that don't have a regular election, you know, you just come out, you do the regular, regular thing that you do for voting and, and vote for those ten propositions, so we can tell the state of Texas how you feel about those ten propositions. For or against, but show up to vote, please. And I'll call five, five-point-three, City Council Comments. You know what? I'll ask five-point-two, just for the sake of, Mr. Pedes, is there going to be a council float for the veteran? And if, if the answer is yes, how is it coming along?
We are working on, on putting one and having one available, sir.
Thank you. Five-point-three, Mr. Pedes, you start, start with you.
No comment.
No comment. Ms. Garza?
I don't have anything to add. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blapp?
Yeah, I just want to ask our city manager, I got several people asking me, when will be our tennis courts be ready?
We are in the final stages of completing them. We are preparing a, a ribbon cutting for the week of Thanksgiving, so they can be